To the Batmobile.
We call the meeting to order for the Ashland Board of Commissioners for the July 24th meeting. Will you stand? And we'll ask Commissioner Good to do our invocation, and Mr. Wirth, if you'll do our presidential allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we come today thanking you for our city. We ask and invite your Holy Spirit into our chambers to preside over our meeting today. We ask for your wisdom and guidance over this Board of Mayor Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and in the best interest of our citizens. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and those in attendance today. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let us stand and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Good and Mr. Wirth. Appreciate that. Motion to receive and file the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll do the regular meetings. We'll do the receive and file the minutes for the June 25th meeting. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now for the recess meeting on June the 11th. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll move on to our mayor and hearings reports. I look out and I see we do have our new director for the Visit Ashland, Celeste Coons, and I don't know if you want to address us here later on. You're more than welcome to do that. We're glad you're here and wish you all the luck and support that we can give you. You may have heard that we're preparing for next year, America 250, America 250. If you want more information on it, you can go to america250.org. But we're trying to plan a lot of interesting things and fun things for that entire year. You know, it was our 250th anniversary of signing of the Declaration of Independence, and we want to be a part of that. We're working on some other task force that will work from our work session the other day. You may have heard about. As a matter of fact, I think with Ms. Coons, if you want to mention earlier next about our vintage road show, our antique show that we're planning to try to get more people to come downtown. With that, I'll just move down the line. Mr. Rintrow?
Well, thank you. I see Strand is here, so I'm not going to take up much time. We're all anxious to hear from them. I just want to brag on our water distribution. There was a six-inch water line broken in my neighborhood probably Friday night. I called it in at about 10:45 Saturday morning. At 11 o'clock, there was somebody out there found the leak, and I was just amazed that, you know, in 15 minutes, they were there, found the leak, and it's now fixed. And thank you all.
All right, so I want to echo the sentiments for the Water Distribution Department as well as the Public Service Department. Thank you, Mr. Murray. I mentioned at the work session last week or week before last about some potholes and manholes that are storm inlets, excuse me, and manholes that are lower, that are, you know, potential hazardous for vehicles. And your crews, the ones that I mentioned, the crews were on them within two days after the 811 call, and they jumped right on it and got those taken care of. I also want to congratulate local reporter MJ Epling for her new role with the Daily Independent. So Aaron, if you're filling in for her, you've got some big shoes to fill. So she's done a great job, and we appreciate her work and the work of the Independent. So that's all I've got today.
All right, great. Mr. Martin?
We're looking forward to hearing from Strand Associates on our wastewater treatment bid opening. It's exciting news, and we look to move forward here. We appreciate the work that was done by the Ashland Fire Department over the weekend with their group down on 14th Street and the two buildings that they exercised in with groups from all over the state and area. Guys did a great job. We appreciate what you've done down there. And I appreciate the effort that has been expended by Michelle and Tony in terms of proposing a revenue change that I think will be very beneficial to the majority of our community, particularly those on fixed income. And we look forward to hearing the details of that.
Yeah, I mean, just tagging on to the fire, I think we had maybe eight or nine different departments that were reppered then and there. So we're excited about to become kind of the training center almost.
Yes, we'll hear from Chief here in a minute about it.
Yep. Commissioner Good?
I just want to welcome everybody to this meeting. And we had a real good ribbon cuttings down there in the heart of Ashland with Kells Tavern last week, taking that space. It was a great Saturday for the makers market. It had great weather, a lot of people downtown. I want to invite everybody, all the small business people, to this Let's Grow Our Small Business Seminar. It's at the Transportation Center next Wednesday. And the Commonwealth Incentives to Assist Small Business Growth, tax credits for growing of business, job creation, and assistance with exporting. The Cabinet for Economic Development from the state will be there. FiveCo, Regional Ad District will be there, each talking about different financial services that are available to business owners, such as tax credits, low interest loans, and grant opportunities. It's a good opportunity for questions to be asked from city staff and regional representatives. So invite all entrepreneurs and small business people next Wednesday. I had a great meeting yesterday with Sean and John Jenkins, Dave Branham, and Aaron Prophet. And all of our departments are really, really busy, but one of the busiest is animal control. There's tons of calls that come into animal control. And so it was very informative to me. I had a call over the weekend about a wild animal being on a residence and what to do about it, and who to call, and the protocol we go through. So I encourage the rest of my commissioners here to, I think we ought to meet with them, just one or two at a time, and try to beef up this service that we have. They do a great job, but they're kind of overrun with one animal control officer for the whole county.
All right.
That's all I have.
One other thing, I want to thank Mike McKay for being with us this afternoon and filling in for Andrew. He does a great job in the legal department, and we appreciate you being here, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd request Director Hall and Strand Associates to come up and give us a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, City Manager. First and foremost, before I get into this, I just wanted to mention one thing real quickly. You know, this was originally going to be a utility update, and it's still a utility update. It's just going to be heavy on the WRRF facility upgrade. So, but I wanted to mention first and foremost that our water treatment plant, again, received another award for, another award for, it's called an AWAP award, for its area-wide optimization program. And it's basically superior excellent water quality for what they call microbial goals. Basically, what this is, is the plan is required to reach certain levels by, you know, for compliance. And this is a level that's significantly more stringent, that we hold ourselves to that same level. So our plan is actively, basically, trying to blow those limits out of the water and get much cleaner water than what is required. So that is something that we're proud of. This is for two years in a row.
Well done.
Congratulations.
So moving on to the treatment plant real quick, Ms. Bonner's got this slide up here. This is just my portion that I want to touch on. I've got a couple of dates up there. I'm not going to read through all of them completely. But what I wanted to make be known about this whole situation that we're talking about, you can see as early as 2019, we started an agreement with Strand. And then we just opened the bid on July 17th, just of this year. What I'm trying to point out here is this process, it's been a long process. It's been a really meticulous process, and it's been something that has not been taken lightly. So this is a long, basically, you're talking 10 years to end up with a sewer treatment plant. So I wanted to point that out, is this is not something that the city just jumped into. This is something that was really looked at closely. As you can see, the apparent low bid that we opened during the bid opening on the 17th was from Judy Construction. It was just a little under $100 million. And this, I wanted to point out that this project is due to, it's the final piece for compliance to our CSO consent judgment. Once we get this plan in place, and we'll be able to hopefully come off of that consent judgment. So this project was driven by compliance, even though the plan is extremely old. The actual driver for this is just to come into compliance for this order here. Just real quickly, the main, the gist of the project, there's a lot of things going on, but wet weather storage, headworks upgrades, ultimately, we'll be able to handle all that extra water that's going to come into the plant, and we'll be able to capture equal to or greater than 93% of all the water coming through the system. So that was kind of the overall main thing that we were trying to do with this project. We also see new clarifiers, de-watering building, and conversion, the irrigation basins, or the current carousels will be converted to irrigation basins. Based on the timeline that we have at this point, assuming everything works out the way we expect it will, this project should be completed in the spring of 2029. So I just wanted to give a little general overview of the project before Strand, our friends at Strand are going to explain to us what the next steps are for this project. So I'll turn it over to them.
Thanks, Mark. As Mark mentioned, we open bids on July 17th, and we've been working on this for five years now. If you go to the next slide, we have the bids that came in. This was a very competitive bid. We had five contractors who were very interested in the project. If you look at how the bids have kind of spread very evenly, I mean, nobody just threw out a number out there. Judy Construction, which we have worked with before, very good contractors to work with, they came in as the lowest bid. I think initially, everybody was thinking it's going to be upwards of $100 million. So we arrived just at the caps of $100 million. So, I mean, it came in as very favorable than we had anticipated. So Judy Construction is, I'm not team Mark, you have worked with Judy Construction, very good to work with. So the next steps will be, if you have the slide, you can go to the next steps. We have an SRF loan, a $44 million loan that we have to provide something to KIA before they can give us authorization to actually award the contract. So as of now, the city cannot award a contract yet, until we get a KIA authorization to award. So these are the next steps that we have to follow. All these bullet points are things that we have to provide, and I think we are working with them out of FiveCo. And next week, we should be able to help the city submit all those items. And then KIA will review and give us authorization to bid. If you can go to the next slide. So KIA grants us authorization to award the contract, and I think at that point, the commission will have an ordinance to award the contract. And we give the mayor the authorization to actually sign our agreement to hopefully Judy Contractor. And then we give the contractor notice to proceed. And at that point, the project starts. They have 42 months to complete the project. So as Mark was mentioning, we are looking somewhere around 2029 to get this project completed. And at that point, we've met all the division of water, CSO control plan conditions, and we just kind of monitor.
If everything goes the way that you think it should go, when would construction begin?
So it depends. I think right now, we have 60 days to award the contract. So that puts us in July, August, September. If you're able to start September, I think we'll probably give them a notice to proceed in October. And the contractor will need some time to mobilize. So November, December, before they actually see machines on site.
Okay.
So how long do you think it would be before KIA authorizes us to take this bid?
It depends. I think, Mark, it has to go through their board to vote on it.
I think we'll get feedback from KIA within a couple of weeks. I think in an upcoming commission meeting, we should know what their thoughts are.
Because we, over the permits and stuff over the last few years, we've been held up and held up and held up, and the price is not going down.
Yes. I think we understand you. I think they will also understand that we have to our contractual obligation to award the contract. So they understand that too. So I think they'll be a little bit quicker on this one.
Okay. All right. We're excited about this.
Yeah, we've been, really, we started working here, I started working here 2005, working on this project. So it's been right out of college. So I've been working on this forever. I never thought this day would come, so.
Mark's hair's turned white in the process, it looks like.
Mine has turned gray. Both Marks.
Any other questions?
Notice on Judy Construction, where actually, they're doing another project for us that we're voting on today.
Yeah, two projects.
Okay. What is your experience? You like them, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're a really good outfit. They've been around for a long time and probably built five or six major water wastewater plants for projects that Strand designed. So you have a good contractor to work with.
Excellent. All right, any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for your work.
And Strand Associates.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask Chief Alley to come up. He's also going to give us a brief presentation.
Mayor and Commissioners, City Manager, good afternoon. Recently, we had the unique opportunity to partner with the city in obtaining two structures on 14th Street that we were able to use for some training. On July 13th, these are a few slides with some pictures on it. We completed a structural collapse rescue training on the old, the Century 21 Building, the commercial building. During that training, which Deputy Chief McKenzie and several members of our department headed up planning that, we relied heavily on Maguire's towing. Maguire's come in, placed a couple of vehicles. One was a sanitation truck, garbage truck that they had in the rear of the building. They also placed a vehicle through the front of the building. That training alone, we had 62 students and 13 various instructors representing 19 different departments. And as you can see on the slide there, we had people from around Louisville, Bressles, Georgetown, Frankfurt, Olive Hill, Lexington, those areas that had came here for that one day of training. These are just, this is another photo of Maguire's where they placed the front of the vehicle through the front of the structure. And I'm not going to read all the slides to you, but we set up eight different skill stations. Maguire's also brought a, basically, a crane in and helped us in doing crane operations with the various students. That is actually moving an AC unit that was on top of that building. They placed it up and down eight different times that day. Also, they supported us with wreckers and, again, setting the equipment. Also helping us was the city's legal department, sewer department, and street department. All of these entities worked together to make this happen, not only for our department, but for the area and area first responders. On the 19th, which was the next Saturday, we did a live fire training scenario within the house. As you can see here, we had 40 students from 15 different departments. State Fire Rescue Training assisted with helping us get that ready and get all the paperwork in. We've done various evolutions, and we had people from as far as Georgetown, Berea, Lawrenceburg, Prestonsburg, and Maysville had came for that event. This was what the aftermath was when we got finished, which also in turn lowers the cost for removal of debris for the city, being able to, we allow those structures to burn all the way down when we're done. But I just wanted to take a moment and thank you all for your all's continued support, and appreciate being behind us.
Well, we're proud of what you do, Chief. I mean, you know, for us to become a center for training, I mean, that shows just an excellent line of professionalism and where we're at in our department.
Yes, sir. And thank you all for that.
Hope your grandson's doing all right down in Lexington.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But I would also like to say, you know, our success with this is due to our members. Our department is committed, and everybody is moving in the same direction and wants to be a leader in this.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks to Will, too.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for the tour you gave me when I was down there.
Thank you, Chief Alley, and your team.
I think we should invite Maguire's down here to a meeting and honor them for the work they've done, not only with the fire department. They've helped out the police department in my years here many times, and they deserve to be honored for the service they give us.
Monday, I think it was, I did send them a thank you card and all that, but.
I would like to publicly do it.
Yeah. We can do that. All right.
That's all I have, sir.
Oh, great. All right. Let's move on to our public participation. If anyone would like to address the commission, you may do so. You can come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to talk. Thank you, Mr. Wirth.
See you, man.
Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Quadey. I'm just doing an update on the property at 1933 Central Avenue. It is under contract. We are still waiting for one document from PNC Bank to finish the transaction. The gentleman that is buying the property and his lawyer are aware of what's going on, and they are okay with, obviously, nobody wants it to drag on any longer, but they are aware of it's going to take another week or two to get this document from PNC Bank. And I just want to let you know where we were at with the purchase.
Are we okay on our side?
What he's talking about is item D on the old business agenda. So I guess whatever the commission would like to do on that, whether to give him more time or to proceed.
I know that Mr. Wheeler was working on that, too. It'd be nice to know.
They just give it a second reading, and I mean, we're okay.
Oh, okay. All right. Good deal. Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to address the commission?
Good afternoon, guys. I'm Celeste Coons. I'm the new executive director of Visit AKY. I am honored and humbled to be here with you guys, and I just wanted to give you a little insight of some things that we have coming up. In the month of August, we have three makers markets on the square. They've been doing fantastically where our local artisans come and show off what the people of Ashland can create. And we also have our Sunset Scenes, which is a movie down on the riverfront on August the 23rd. It's, I Know What You Did Last Summer, and the last one we held was fantastic. We had over 715 people. We had over seven hundred and fifteen people per our Placer app attend that, so that was awesome on the riverfront. It's cool to see the kids come in with their blankets and sit and watch a movie and have a good time and enjoy themselves and enjoy our riverfront, enjoy Ashland. Like Chuck spoke about earlier, we're working on an antique, it's kind of like an antique roadshow. It's called the AKY Vintage Antique Show. It's gonna be on Saturday, September the sixth, in the square. It's also gonna be partially in the Camayo Arcade. So anything that has to be climate controlled will go in there. We're vetting those right now. This morning, I did the analytics off of our Facebook, and we've had twenty-seven thousand looks on that as of right now. So it looks like it's matriculating pretty awesomely, so I think it's gonna be a great event. It's gonna follow our First Friday, and we also have a First Friday next week, too. So next Friday from six to nine, we'll be doing our First Friday right before Trace Atkins goes on the stage at the Paramount. So we're gonna have a pretty amazing weekend, next weekend in Ashland. But just wanted to let you guys know what's going on and tell you how much I appreciate being here. And if you need me, you know where to find me.
Thanks, Ms. G.
Thank you, Celeste.
Anyone else like to address the commission? Hearing none, we'll move on to our old business, item A.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Light's Enterprises Incorporated for the Purchase of All Labor, Materials, Equipment and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris of fourteen oh seven Acres Street in the Amount of five thousand nine hundred dollars for the Department of Community and Economic Development to be Paid from Community Development Block Grant Funds."
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item B.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Tri-State Construction for the Purchase of All Labor, Materials, Equipment and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris of thirty-one sixty-nine Central Avenue in the Amount of four thousand eight hundred dollars for the Department of Community and Economic Development to be Paid from Community Development Block Grant Funds."
So move.
Say.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Fixing the Eight Ad Valorem Tax Levy for the Year 2025 Payable in the Year 2025 on Real Estate, Personal Property, and Franchises in the City of Ashland for the City Revenue Propose Purposes, Providing for a Discount of One Percent on Ad Valorem Taxes Only Which Are Paid on or Before the Fifteenth Day Following the Bill Date and Providing for a Penalty of Ten Percent and Six Percent Interest Per Annum for Any Taxes Which Are Paid After the Due Date, Said Due Date Being Thirty Days Following the Bill Date."
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
It's a twenty percent reduction of our property taxes.
That's exciting, isn't it? Yeah, twenty-six percent, you know, that's huge.
It is.
And excellent work.
Yeah, this is gonna benefit, this is gonna benefit a lot of individuals in our community, a majority of our community. I don't know the percentage, I knew it several months ago, was making, their household income was forty thousand dollars or less. So this is gonna be a big savings for them.
Big boost.
This is gonna be great.
Yep, big boost. Excellent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Item D.
Second reading and final adoption of ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Light's Enterprises Incorporated for the Purchase of All Labor, Materials, Equipment and Services for the Demolition and Removal of All Debris of nineteen thirty-three Central Avenue in the Amount of nine thousand two hundred dollars for the Department of Community and Economic Development to be Paid from the General Fund."
So move. Second.
Discussion?
We'll just hold up on this, per Mr. Quadey's request, for a period of time.
Right. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda.
Resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting, Authorizing, and Approving the Course of Action Presented by the City Manager on the Items Appearing on the Consent Agenda for the Regular Meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
So move.
Discussion?
Second.
All right, second, discussion. All right, let's see, I think I had everything right. All right, okay, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Moving on to our new business, item A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Submit the Combined Twenty Twenty-Five, Twenty Twenty-Nine Consolidated Plan and the Program Year Twenty Twenty-Five Annual Action Plan for a Community Development Block Grant to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and Upon Acceptance of Said Plans from HUD, to Execute on Behalf of the City of Ashland an Agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to Enable the City to Undertake These Activities and/or Any and All Documents Associated with the Grant Submital."
So move. Say.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
You have that?
Yes, sir.
All right, item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with Ashland Community Kitchen Incorporated, the Subrecipient of a fifteen thousand dollars for Operating Costs from the Community Development Block Grant Fund."
So move. Say.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with the Board County Council on Aging Incorporated, DBA Ashland Senior Center, the Subrecipient of fifteen thousand dollars from the Community Development Block Grant."
So move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with the Community Assistance Referral Service Incorporated, CARES, the Subrecipient of fifteen thousand dollars for Operating Costs from the Community Development Block Grant."
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item E.
First reading and approval of ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with First United Methodist Church, the Subrecipient of five thousand dollars for Operating Costs from the Community Development Block Grant."
So move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item F.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with Hillcrest Bruce Mission, the Subrecipient of fifteen thousand dollars for Operating Costs from the Community Development Block Grant."
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item G.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with Safe Harbor of Northeast Kentucky Incorporated, the Subrecipient of ten thousand dollars for Operating Costs from the Community Development Block Grant."
So move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item H.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute Amendment Two to the Agreement for Engineering Services Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Bell Engineering, Increasing the Contract in the Amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars for the Johnson Fork, Bogus Drive, and Florida Street Water Booster Station Repairs Project for the Department of Engineering."
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item I.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving Change Order Number Two Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and CJ Hughes Construction Company Incorporated for the Carr Street, Packard Avenue, and Iroquois Avenue Sanitary Sewer Line Replacement Project, Increasing the Contract in the Amount of seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents for the Department of Engineering."
So move. Say.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item J.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Adopting the City of Ashland Utility Assistance Program for City of Ashland Residents."
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Feach, for working on this. This is also gonna be a benefit for low to mid-income individuals in our community, so.
I would, you'll never view you all like.
Please.
Sure.
I need to thank Ms. Woolery. She actually helped us write the plan. This will be for the City of Ashland residents. We use our ARPA investment interest to fund this up to one fifty. It is a one-time program. We will provide up to a hundred and twenty-five dollars for our citizens that are struggling with their water, sewer, or garbage bill. If they have a turnoff notice, they can apply, and we will immediately attain their application and process the money for them to help them get back caught up with this. It is a good plan, it's a good, it's a good program, and we look forward to implementing it. Once upon approval, we will have Erica do some, on social, posting on social media, and we'll have it in the City of Ashland lobby.
When they get their shut-off notice, how many days they have actually before they shut it off, so, I mean, in order to apply?
To, and if they, if they actually apply or call in, we will, we obviously note the count. We are very customer-friendly with that, and that applies to other programs besides the one that we're gonna be doing. The shut-off notice, they have, I think, ten days, but they have thirty days before they get the shut-off notice. So they're into day forty before they are getting that.
And this plan will exist only until the exhaustion of the.
Only to the exhaustion of funds, of the hundred and fifty thousand.
How much?
Hundred and fifty thousand.
If a person is outside the city limits using the Ashland water and can't pay, they are not eligible?
We chose Ashland residents due to the fact that it was Ashland's ARPA money that is paying for it.
The answer is no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Good job.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item K.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Providing for the Regulation of Gathering, Disposing, and Destruction of Garbage, Rubbish, and Related Waste Materials and Fixing Fees Therefore, Establishing the Division of Solid Waste, Establishing Sewer and Water Rates, Tap Fees, Installation Charges, Service Charges, Industrial Pretreatment Charges, Penalties, and Interest, Providing a Penalty for the Violation of this Ordinance and Repealing Ordinance Number Two Fifteen, Series of Twenty Twenty-Four."
So move. Second.
Discussion? Another reduction.
You want to explain this, Michelle?
I almost stood up here. This is a twofold. The garbage rates are being reduced by twenty percent. This reduction results in the city collecting approximately five hundred and twenty-eight thousand less than revenue. Our households that are currently paying twenty-seven fifty-nine will now pay twenty-two oh seven, they will save five fifty-two a month. We also, you all have a program for low-income disabled and elderly that pay eighteen sixty-four. Their garbage will now be fourteen ninety-one a month. So you are going to directly affect the household budgets with giving them back money with this reduction in this revenue. These revenue restructures will result in a net increase of one point seven million when we do the, we'll have the occupational, the, you've already reduced the property tax and the garbage. The rates, reduced rates will go to effect thirty days following the second reading. Just give it enough time to bill. And the second part of this ordinance will actually, we're, we're upping the, funding the sewer treatment plant. Their, the minimum bills, we're changing the dates by six months. It was already rate increases involved. We're upping them with six months, by six months, where we can get money to pay the debt service on the additional thirty million that we're going to have to fund the sewer treatment plant. But even with that, the first year, there's still a net savings of three twenty-six per utility bill. So even with addressing the sewer treatment plant, there still will be a net savings on our residents' utilities.
Sure.
Anytime we can put money back in the pockets of our residents.
Yes.
We need to focus on that.
We're helping the people that need to be helped.
And we want to stress, we are still pursuing every operational economy reduction that we can. We are, you all are up to collectively since January, I think, we've saved about two point five million. We are looking at every area, how to run the city more efficiently, where we can save money in our operational expenses, too.
Well, I think we're just like you, we all want more. You know, we want to fund as much as we can to be as efficient as we can. I think it's a goal we've had right from the beginning.
And, you know, with the CS charge, in addition to the hundred million, I think an interesting fact is the city has already paid fifteen million in cash to do the collection upgrades to the CSO. We've, we paid them, we've only borrowed once for them. With the money, the surcharge that we have collected, we've been able to pay in cash, and we've not been able to have to pay interest income for the last fifteen years on these, because every project was planned, and we paid in cash with it, with that surcharge. So that surcharge has been going to fix the collection part of the CSO overflows.
Again, well done.
Thank you, Ms. Feach.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item I. No, L.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Repealing Ordinance Number Fifty-One, Series of Twenty Twenty-One, and Continuing an Occupational License Fee to be Charged to Those Parties Who Practice a Business, Trade, or Profession Within Ashland's Corporate Limits, Including Employees, Setting the Fee to be Charged, Identifying the Compensation Which Is Subject to the Fee, Establishing Withholding, Filing a Payment Responsibility, Providing for a Net Profit Fee with Payment and Reporting Responsibility for Businesses, Setting Fourth Enforcement Provisions, Providing for Confidentiality of Records Filed with the City, and Creating a Penalty for the Violation of this Ordinance."
Motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion?
Michelle, can you give us a quick recap, please?
Yes, this proposes as far, part of the three items of the revenue restructure is to increase the occupational tax from two to two point three seven five percent with the reduction in garbage and the reduction in property taxes. This will do an additional one point seven million in additional revenue to the city's general fund, which we all know has been experiencing liquidity issues, which has resulted in the city being on a lot of credit. The city will continue to monitor and reduce our operational expenses. This has not been adjusted since twenty thirteen. It's been more than a decade since we have adjusted this. And so this, you know, most cities, their biggest source of revenue is the occupational tax. But, you know, not only helping households, something I didn't touch on earlier that I should have, reduce property taxes and stuff is also makes a good business environment for us, too. You know, when someone's coming in here, because your, our property tax with the rate that you all just approved is gonna be under a two hundred dollars on each hundred thousand dollars worth of value of a structure. So I think if you look at our areas around us, that is a very good property tax rate.
Very competitive.
To put it in perspective, it's probably almost sixty cents, sir, when you started here, ten years, fifteen years ago. So.
Michelle, would you reassure me again, because I'm worried about this? We're, the property tax goes into effect basically immediately, right?
It immediately goes into effect.
Twenty percent.
When they get that bill out, it's gonna be twenty percent less than it was.
This raising occupation tax doesn't take effect till January first.
January one, twenty.
In the meantime, we're wanting to get off the line of credit.
Yes.
Me, being a non-accountant, would think we're lowering property taxes, we're getting less money. How are we getting off the line of credit if we're taking in less money?[1780.94]
And we'll take in less until January 1st, until the occupation tax kicks in.
We will actually have, we'll have the property tax revenue that will come in in August and September. October will, it will be the end of our quarter, so we'll have our occupational, our insurance tax. The key to this is not only the revenue restructure, the key is to continue to look at less operating expenses, which we have plans and thoughts in our heads to, we're working towards implementation on some of those also. But there'll be times, we'll still be on the line of credit to January, but this, this has given us a plan, not only with the revenue restructure, continued operational expenses, and with property tax season, that does give us two more million dollars because we'll collect it in a two-month period than we normally have had the rest of the calendar year.
Right.
So, so some of it.
Did I get it for you?
Well, you know.
Some of it is like.
We're getting a major influx of cash here in the next two months.
But less than what we got last year.
Well, but it's still a chunk of money.
Yeah. It'll still be managing our cash flow and our expenses very closely until, you know, we get back to where we should be. But it's, it's extra cash flow, a lot of it's timing. And with, uh, July, July will actually be a month where we collect occupational and insurance taxed. August is a month where we'll collect the property tax. September will be a slower month, but October will be another month that we'll collect insurance tax and occupational tax.
And I, let me go on, Rick, I'm not against lowering property taxes. I pay them myself. I'm just, you know, I'm just, I'm not an accountant. So I'm glad you.
I hope we have proposed a plan that, you know, I'm very confident that it'll, it'll take us where we need to be. And I still want to stress, operational expenses still need to be addressed.
Thank you.
Everson.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item M.
Sign Ordinance Appeal. Young signs is seeking approval to convert an existing static billboard face to an electronic display face at 2840 Greenup Avenue.
All right, I think I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
All right, any discussion?
I have to abstain. I've represented Mr. Young for the.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine.
We need a second.
We need a second?
I second it.
You second that? I know even Mr. Young in discussions with this offered that if we needed to put out any information or anything like that, that they will be able to program that in for us. So that would give us another opportunity to, to let people know and communicate with them. That's what, that's our goal is.
And all this is, is replace one that's already happened.
Going from a, a regular billboard to an electronic billboard.
No problem.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Young, for your work on the, on the front door. It looks wonderful.
So thanks for all you do, Mr. Young.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we recess today's meeting until tomorrow at 12 noon so we get some second readings on things, but I want to recess it in the name of Pastor Ron Foltz.